Before we get started, I'm gonna ask Supervisor Carter if he'll do our invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Vice Chair Tatum. Let's all stand, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's great to see everybody here today in an exciting budget day for the county. I know we're all excited about it. With that, let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all the blessings you bestow on us. How fortunate we are to live in this beautiful county. We thank you for the blessings of spring and the renewal of life and the promise of hope. In his name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
We've got a couple of things that we've got to do today. And I figured that the best way to do it would be, we'll try to do it this way. We've got to break hereby about 3:00 to 3:30 and take a vote on our proposed rate and proposed tax increase if we choose to go that way. And the reason I say we've got to do that by 3:30 is today's the deadline and we've got until 5:00 to get it in the newspaper. So I thought maybe the best way to do that, and I know everybody has got comments and you've got your proposals, that's why I wanted to make sure that there was paper and pen at the podium for everybody. You should have a tablet there to make your notes on. What we'll do is we'll go around and everybody can do what they've read and how they want to see that and if they want to talk to any of the department heads. Now, I'm asking you to keep, we don't need to see all the department heads because our county admin has done a great job with their budget. But if there's somebody that in particular that you've got questions, we'll make sure that they're here at our next meeting. So we'll go around and everybody will just do their proposal or their thoughts here. And then when we take our break and do the vote, there's supposed to be a sandwich here for us. We'll do that, then we'll come back and we'll have our meeting and everybody will talk and say everything that they want to say there. But to expedite it, I think Tim has to leave and go to work. He said sometimes after 4:00 or 5:00 to go to work, but we'll open it up then and then we'll have everybody here on the 20, 19, 20, 21st. All the department heads here will be here along with David Rose from Davenport. And we'll have that there for that. So with that being said, I think you have a little statement there of what we've got to do at Chris Switlow for today. We don't have the language yet. I understand that staff is still trying to put the language together. And just give us a little overview on what that is about and where it's going with that, please.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have before you draft notices. These are advertisements for the newspaper regarding the proposed 24-25 budget. Of course, that is for the public hearing, which is drafted as tentatively set for the budget from Monday, March the 25th at 6:00 p.m. Of course, that's the opportunity for the public to come and offer their thoughts regarding the county budget as well as the county tax rates that you'll see there. There's also, this year being a reassessment year, there's a second public hearing this year that we will actually look to hold the week of April the 8th. And I do understand there will need some consensus from the board regarding April 8th. I think there may be a conflict, a meeting conflict on April 9th. And so I think it's been requested that possibly that April 8th hearing on the reassessment be held on April the 8th at 6:00. And that is concerning the reassessment and the equalized or the rate, if you will, the actual real estate rate, which of course is proposed currently at 45 cents. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, there's one other ordinance there that you have before you or an advertisement, and that's for the tax relief for the elderly and disabled. And we would look, per the board's pleasure of holding that public hearing also on Tuesday, March the 25th. Following that public hearing, the board could take action that evening, whether to move forward with tax relief for the elderly and disabled with increasing those limits. That would give our commissioner some additional time over the coming weeks prior to the May deadline for tax relief. So what you have before you are draft public notices. And as you noted, Mr. Chairman, following some discussion here this afternoon, whether it be the board's pleasure, this is not to approve the tax rates. This is not to approve the county budget. This is simply to move forward with advertising the budget, advertising the tax rates for public hearing. The budget adoption and the tax rates will not be adopted until that first or second week in April or at the board's pleasure thereafter. So today, really, the action is just to send the budget for public hearing and the tax rates for public hearing. I will add, Mr. Gwynn is not here, but confirmed with him earlier, once the tax rates have been advertised and the public hearing is held on the tax rates and the budget, the tax rates can be reduced but not necessarily increased. And so if there was a discussion today that the proposed tax rate needs to be increased, we would need to have that discussion today. But not, but you can go down, you can't necessarily go up, once that public hearing is held and once that public hearing is advertised. So I'd be happy to answer any questions myself or the staff.
Is these the, have been vetted by the county attorney? And that's what they are, the proposals that we will be, Brian Shaggin's head? No?
Mr. Chairman, I'm looking at, I'm looking at Mr. Carter. So these are the proposed tax rates that you have before you?
But is this the language that?
This is the proposed budget language. There is likely a modification to the hearing on the proposed budget. Mr. Carter's waiting to hear back from Mr. Gwynn on the ad. But nothing will substantially change between what you have before you and the ad. The tax rates as proposed are what they were presented as last week, and the budget as proposed is what it is as been presented last week.
All right. Can we get copies of that? Our clerk make us copies of this so that we can have them.
I think you should have them.
Already got it.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make a note that there's an error on the, at least I think it is.
Oh, okay.
On the elderly relief. It says Tuesday, March 25th. That should be Monday.
That is correct, Ms. Smith. Good catch.
Thanks for that catch. And the April, the April that, for the future, the Tuesday?
Monday, the April 8th.
The Tuesday was the date, but we're moving it to the Monday.
Per the board's consensus, yes.
And the board's, everybody, we've already polled the board and everybody, and so that, so that worked.
Six o'clock.
Was six o'clock, correct.
Okay.
I think it was six o'clock. All right. That's for the housekeeping part. We'll make sure that when we get these dates finalized, that everybody gets a copy of that. Hard copy, maybe before the date's out, before we leave today, we can have that. Okay. I know everybody's got their notes here and everything that they want to go through. Like I said, we need to try, we won't have discussion. We'll just keep it professional. We'll do what you're, where you're looking at, and then we need to try to get through this so we can make your notes here. And then we'll come back after that and we'll stay here as long as we need to, to get everything done. But here in the beginning, let's just do that. I generally wait till last, but I can go first to show what we want to do if you like, or you can go. Nobody's saying anything. I'll go first then. I think that, I like the way that Switlow presented his budget. I think it was a very good budget. I think the proposals that were there were good. I thought it was a lot of thing and I commend the staff for it. I'll start with the school budget, the way it was presented. I have, I have a problem with any kind of an increase for that. We've already gave them the 1 point, the carryover funds, and then the 1.25. As far as I'm concerned, we can keep those carryover funds to come back. I don't have any problem with giving a raise to the teachers. As a matter of fact, that's what my proposal would be, and that's what I'm talking about. The teachers, the TLC 1 through 3, the GO1 through G13, given the proposed budget raise that was in the county budget as well as what the state is talking about. We're from G14 to G25, maybe a 1% raise. I thought very interesting with Mr. Carter's proposal when he went back and talked about how that it was all froze, but then he found out all of that money and it was showed on there, there. And then I would like, with the consensus of the board, I know that, I know that in the past, we've talked about this. I'd like to see what would be involved. I think it's Green County. I know that there's a county that the school has to come before the board every month for the allocation. Therefore, there's more control over the budget and the money there and where it's spent. I'd like to see what all would be involved with us potentially going to something to that effect. And as far as the closing of the schools, I commend the school board for what they've done there. Took a lot of carriage, a lot of foresight there. I had no clue that there were 47 empty classrooms throughout the entire county until Dr. Sears presented that. I think it's a good proposal there. I see that's $2 million right there that they're saving. I don't understand why you gotta have more when you're saving on that, that you take care of the teacher shortage and everything. And with that, I agree, or I see, read the paper, they're proposing what was in their budget here. It should take care of the teacher shortage and everything with that and the teachers and the people that are doing the work there. I go back to with the staff, with what our county staff did, I thought they did a really good job with their budget. I would like to meet with, in our work session coming up on the 20th, I'd like to meet with the staff. I'd like to talk with Paul Chapman and Kevin Tosh in reference to personnel in the county fair. And of course, meeting with Davenport and David Rose. And then my proposal with Burnt Chimney School is getting with the sheriff and public safety there and whoever. See about converting that into the 911 center. It's already a voting precinct. It already has a library there. I don't know how much room the 911 center's gonna be, but I think we can consolidate a lot of services right there. And I understand that the radio system that's on the tower, that's on the water tank, that that's some of the primary radio systems within the county, and it's right there beside them and all of that. That's my proposal for that, for what I saw with the budget in my reading with that. Who's prepared to go next? Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't want to get too far into the weeds. First of all, I'll say, I want to thank the staff for all the hard work on this budget, putting this together. I know it took hours and hours and thank y'all for that. I think it's a well-written, well-conceived budget. Me personally, I don't know that I'm gonna go for this 45% tax rate. We can discuss that when we get into the thick of things, but I'll give you an example. I went to the grocery store the other day. I spent $80. I did not purchase any meat. I could carry everything I bought in two hands into the house. The struggles are real for a lot of folks in Franklin County, and I'm very empathetic to the elderly on fixed incomes, what's classified as the working poor. There's just a lot of folks here that cannot afford a big tax hike. With that being said, I'll just touch on a few things concerning the budget. I was looking at the request for new positions as proposed. I'm in favor of the paramedics, the three paramedic firefighters. The one thing I am gonna have an issue with, and she has come before this board, every year I've been on the board, asking for a position, and that would be the Commissioner of Revenue's office. She is asking for a deputy three position, and I would like to see that moved to the forefront if we have to do away with one of these positions that's been approved. I think we should to give Commissioner Torrance what she needs. I think the, and I know I have asked for this along with some other supervisors, a planning code enforcement officer. We may not need that position now because the sheriff has told us we can use the SROs in the summer when school's out. So if we can use an SRO to fill that position for a while, I think if we did away with this planning code enforcement officer, we could possibly move towards giving Margaret what she needs in the Commissioner of Revenue's office. With that being said, let me just look through my list. It's a lot of information here the general public, I'm sure, is unaware. I like what was being proposed for the IT department. I would like to see maybe some more money put into tourism and economic development. I'm still not a fan of the Roanoke Regional Partnership. And as I told you all last year, when that guy came here and told this board, the reason we didn't have businesses, we didn't have gas at Summit View, well, we're gonna get gas, and I'll repeat this, when we do, if they don't bring businesses here, we are no longer gonna be part of the Roanoke Regional Partnership. I'm tired of throwing money at them and not seeing real results for Franklin County. The schools briefly, I applaud them for the tough decision of closing those schools. If you read the information, the declining birth rate, the drop in enrollment, which has been occurring since before I was elected, they really had no choice. Empty classrooms. I think this realignment and reconsolidation is gonna be good for the school system. I'd like to see the teachers get their raises. I am not in favor of making the 1.25 million we gave them this year permanent funding moving forward. And that's about all I have today, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mitchell?
I'd like to echo what Mike said about the work that you all put into the budget as well planned and put together, but just to be honest, a little rich for my taste. And I'd like to walk it back just a minute, just to clarify, when you look at, it's not just four cent. Brian, did you ever get that total we talked about earlier?
When we were looking at what an extra 1% would be or 101% of the assessment that the amount you're talking about?
Well, the 1% that we were taking at the top that you didn't have to have the public hearing for because that's already worked into, without any increase, correct?
The 20, yes, sir. I did look at that. The 2023 assessment was around 44.7 million, so 1% of that's about 447,000.
So we're looking at half a million.
That would be, half a million would be the increase. Yes, sir.
So if we walk it back, it's just not a four penny increase, it'd be a half a million there. And then not to mention the 3 million that we already took in the personal property where we did not give the, I don't guess discount's the word for it. So you're looking at more like seven and a half. And, and when the budget was first presented, it's good, but I still, I think there's room to cut. And I asked in before the budget season to look at where we could make some cuts. And I was disappointed to not see the Snow Creek building in there. When you look at money, we spend other places on leases and what we've built in construction and all, $100,000 is quite the value for the county to house paid personnel. So I'd like that to be reconsidered. The schools, I'd like to support their pay increase for the teachers, but we have to, I would leave it to staff to see how we word that because we have to wait and see what we get back from the state, and that's a sticky situation that I know nothing about. Let's see. I made a statement, been several months back, to the Rocky Mount Fire Department or Town of Rocky Mount, however you want to view it, that the fire truck request they had made was a budget issue, and I still believe it is. And even after looking at this budget with the proposed increase it is and that not even being a part of it, I'm still where I was on that. That's a no for me. The, I think it's important for the public to know, they ordered two trucks, not just one. And saying that you're buying it in the name of saving your taxpayer money and then coming to us to try and pay for it is wrong. And if you want to save taxpayer money, buy one and finance it for 10 years, not two, finance it for 20. And that's a guaranteed way to save money. I'll close by saying that I believe that, well, and one other thing, you know, Farm Bureau came to us asking for that money for their study. And when you look at a raise like this on a budget, and like Mike said, on people who are already pushed and stressed, we need to have a way for things like that for, so when someone asks for that, we're not all looking at each other and being like, oh, gosh, what are we gonna do? How are we gonna come up with this? And, but yeah, I think it can be trimmed back. And I'll leave it at that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. James?
Thank you. I agree with what Chairman Thompson said as far as the schools goes. You know, I'd be, like, see the teachers get their raise, their wages paid too. They're getting any money going to them, I'd like to hold off to see what the state legislation is gonna do. It's a lot of, a lot of legislation out there and a lot of funds that's hanging that I think we may be able to use and school could use too. Other item, public safety, I want to dig deeper into that and that budget there and take a look at it and see if we can cut anything there. Any other options that's out there to cut? I think we do need to, with the economy the way it is, I agree with everybody. Everybody knows what inflation is now. You call it 3%, but that's a lie. So people are hurting. That's all I've got.
Mr. Quinn?
Thank you. So I divided my comments up into the school and the rest of the county, and with the schools, I'll go there first. The capital plan is not complete as evidenced by the Snow Creek omissions. That means we will likely be surprised by capital requests, and we cannot do proper planning to manage near and far-term capital expenditures. Secondly, I better understand now the 2.9 million request for compensation where the teachers have been denied steps for certain years, and this comp would enable us to pay the teachers more fairly. I did ask Jeff Worley two questions. One was I wanted to better understand how many steps behind the teachers are. I thought they might have data to indicate that for us. And the second was, they are claiming that the retention rate is poor, and this would help us have a better retention rate. And so I would like to see what the retention rate is today. But assuming that they provide that data and it's consistent with what they've told us, I would support the 2.9 million for more comp this year. The last comment I'd make about the schools is, I looked at the comparison between Franklin County and the other counties, and the uncompetitive comp system for the first 10 steps seems to encourage the brightest and most capable teachers to leave for higher-paying jobs in other school systems while other teachers can just stay, knowing they will be paid the highest comp in the region. I think these first 10 steps should be given priority when applying the compensation. And my last comment for the schools, I would like to see more concrete next steps for funding the new CTE school. Then moving on to the county, just in general, my comment is the county budget, without the school component, increased 17%, and that increase is excessive and almost six times the rate of inflation last year. And that's driving a proposed average 12% property tax increase, and for many on the lake, the increase will be over 20%. And I don't feel that increase is acceptable. I'd like to see the specific objectives that are requiring such a large increase and wonder where reductions can be made to keep the increase reasonable. Regarding specific budget items that maybe need review and explanation, I can't provide detailed recommendations on specific cuts. I look through all the lines. I just, I'm not a student of all the detail. However, I would encourage you to focus on these areas. General and financial administration was up 1.1 million or 18%. The judicial administration was up 600,000 or 17%. Public safety was up 2.7 million or 13%, and health and welfare was up 1.9 million or 11%. Then I had specific ideas for the county to look at for cost savings. One is outsourcing the trash trucking. Franklin County is not a trucking company, and as such, I believe we could outsource this operation to save annual operating and capital expenditures and a lot of management headaches. And that's not to say that's something we would do now as part of this budget. It's more forward-looking. The second idea is optimizing the school resource officer configuration. I think our solution to man every elementary school with an SRO might feel good, but I do not believe it is in the best security interest for our kids. We have seen a lot of feel-good security that has failed, like the locked doors in Sandy Hook that were broken into and the Parkland SRO who was afraid to confront the shooter. I think it is incredibly hard to find good SROs. They must be technically trained, which means they must be able to shoot the bad guy, and that is the easy objective part. But more importantly, they must have the courage to confront a shooter, and that is a very hard characteristic to gauge. And now the county is faced with another significant layer of expense as grants expire since each SRO costs 60,000 a year plus benefits, plus equipment and a vehicle. I liken the current school shooting crisis to the time when a lot of airlines were being hijacked. The U.S. started using ununiform air marshals on random flights. I believe we would better off, we would be better off with fewer courageous SROs not dressed in uniforms who randomly move between the schools. This system would improve security, reduce costs, and help the sheriff stay focused on quality rather than quantity. The third idea is moving operations from the leased buildings to owned buildings. The recent move of the emergency response operations out of leased buildings into county buildings is a great example of this one. The fourth item is, the county's approach to filling key positions is not optimal since it is taking an extended amount of time. The Director of Economic Development and the Director of Public Safety are two examples. I feel like we are limping along without people in key roles. And I know you have a temporary Director of Economic Development to keep the lights on. However, we urgently need a rock star in this role to passionately pursue economic development for Summit View and our villages. Every day that goes by is a lost day of progress on this front. So I wonder if we are offering enough compensation, or do we need a devoted recruiter, or should we pay for a headhunter to fill these roles? The right person in this role will help us grow top-line revenue, which eases the property tax burden on the public. The fifth idea was, I was wondering if you had added positions where services appear to be not sufficient just based on comments. One is in the planning area where it feels like we have delays, and the second is in enforcement, which was already previously mentioned. I'd like to see the county consider higher charges for county services such as EMS and landfill, even though I recently took my tires there and they're now $4 a tire versus two. Finally, moving on, I'd like to see more progress on converting the green boxes to compactor sites. Jeff Golden made an impassioned plea about the urgency to convert these sites and the savings we would enjoy, and I bought into the concept. I would like to see specific items and more money in all the village plan pools. I realize I'm asking the county to utilize these plans differently than in the past. I want us to actively pursue working towards progressing the village plans. I get a lot of complaints, we've done the village plans before. I get a lot of complaints, we've done the village plans before and nothing happens. In fact, there has been a mass exodus of businesses out of the Union Hall as an example. I want something to happen this time. If the county does not devote some funding and resources, then the plans will not progress. I also think the county should support their staff in this regard, who wants to put their heart and soul into developing a plan only to see it placed on a shelf. Specifically, I'd like to see the following additions for the Union Hall Village Plan. Administrative funds for three strategic plans. These are just conceptual design and not, and cost and not the project itself, so there's small money. The studies will not cost a lot, but they will enable us, enable us to prioritize these initiatives and to seek funding in the future. So, the three are the roads that are in the Union Hall designated growth area, the sewer that would serve the Union Hall designated growth area and the last is cell coverage, which is all the way from the Pennsylvania County in Penhook to Glade Hill and further would help our emergency, emergency response in that area. I'd also like to see the unallocated capital expense funds for all the village plans to make progress next year. Then, uh, I just had a reminder here, it was already brought up with the Farm Bureau study, we got some more information from them and I think it was what we asked for. So, I was, that's just a reminder. And then, I'd like to really keep, uh, the parks and rec increase. It feels like they have a pretty modest budget and a pretty modest increase and I'd like to keep the capital budget increase even though it's quite dramatic. I think that we strangled the county with capital for a long time and so I would be supportive of keeping that where it is. So those are all my comments, thank you.
Ms. Smith?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, um, I would echo the remarks from my colleagues about my gratitude to staff. I know that this has been a very trying and time-consuming effort to bring this proposed budget together and we very much appreciate that and the efforts and all of the research that's required to bring a proposed budget to the supervisors. So thank you all very, very much. So, um, I have analyzed, um, the proposed budget line item by line item and I'm not, as Mr. Carter said, I'm not going to get in the weeds right now. There are areas that I have questions in and I'll try to just kind of, uh, not necessarily dig into the questions, but basically talk about topical areas. First of all, with the schools, uh, I am in support of, uh, the schools being able to fund teacher compensation study. Um, I do want to, I would like to more closely examine, uh, the scale for administrators and also the scale that's listed below the teachers for, um, like the cafeteria workers and the school bus drivers and so forth. So I would like more information from the school board, um, about making sure that that 2.9 million dollars is going where it needs to go to meet the needs that we currently have. With respect to the stopgap funding, uh, that Franklin County, um, that the Board of Supervisors decided to allocate to the schools at the beginning of January, um, to provide a stopgap revenue allocation for, um, the ADM decline in state revenue, um, I, I, I would very much, um, like for that 1.2 million dollars to be pulled back, um, from the, uh, from the allocation that was suggested. My rationale for that is, is that we agreed to provide stopgap funding to help the schools and give them a year. And if they would meet us halfway, we'd have a bridged, um, that gap would be bridged for a year and they could make very thoughtful and intelligent and give them the kind of decision time that they needed. So the school board opted to go ahead and close two schools, so in my estimation, um, the need for stopgap funding, um, is somewhat off the table. Um, I, I agree with the carryover piece that we decided on, but the stopgap and I really feel strongly about that because the board was going to be forced to make some hard decisions about taking that money out of our reserves and that is something that we don't like to do in all practicality. We judged this as an emergency situation, uh, which it was, but the school boards worked very courageously, uh, and made some difficult decisions. With regard to, um, parks and rec, I also would like to discuss the ag fair. That was, uh, one of the notes that I had made. Public safety, um, I would like to talk more with public safety, um, about the apparatus, about, um, pool branch and, uh, talk about the station allocations that we have. Um, and I would like to discuss, um, how we're working through, uh, previous board work sessions where we talked about maintenance costs being borne by the county, um, and where the requests for equipment, um, from the stations is being captured. So I have numerous questions in the public safety arena. Economic development, highly interested in, um, hearing, I know we have an interim in Ms. Doughty, um, however, I, I really am not pleased with, um, the amount of money that we continue to think we can get by on in economic development. I, I view our budget as minimal and if we're going to as a board, seek to be aggressive in the economic development and in the business growth category to try to keep tax increases off our plate for the future, I think we've got to get serious about economic development and we need to fund it accordingly. The agency section in our budget, I would like to discuss. The, one of, I have questions there, but one of the underlying principles, uh, is that I again, I think for the second or third year in a row, believe that we need to be on a somewhat of a screened basis, uh, for requests that would go out to the communities. Um, I'm seeing the same folks on the same list year in, year out and it's, it's arbitrary in my personal opinion and if asked why we're funding, who we're funding, I can't answer the question. So I feel we need a process, um, that where agencies rise up and we have an allocated pot of money for that. With regard to the village plans, as, as, um, as Dan has articulated, uh, village plans have become very much a centerpiece of, uh, the county's economic development efforts, although, you know, albeit that it's really kind of stayed on the planning side of things. I think we need to begin to integrate our economic development efforts with planning with regard to what these village plans say and what they're going to require incrementally to demonstrate progress in this work. It's very important, it's articulated in our comp plan, uh, as well as, uh, you know, we'll be talking about it with our zoning rewrite. So I would very much like to see us start to mean business about our village plans. Let's see, the capital list that we have, um, we really haven't had an opportunity as a board to review, uh, the capital project spreadsheet that we have. Um, I think that given where we are and making some, uh, fundamental decisions about where we're putting chunks of money, I would like to see us, uh, review that capital schedule. And let's see here, make sure I've got everything. I would like to talk about the SROs. Um, and I, I really, well, I, I'm just going to leave it at that. We need to talk about the SROs and basically, I guess, topically, it would be pretty much how, how does our SRO program targeting that we did last year, how is it now reflected with the closure of schools? And I think that there has been some school sharing, um, over past months and I'd like to kind of get from the schools what they're doing, what they're observing and also from our sheriff as well. Let's see here. I would like to say, um, I'm going to jump back real quickly with the schools. I do have some questions for the schools with respect to, um, their insurance, school buses, school bus purchases. I would continue like, I would continue to request a cost benefit analysis of our special ed day placement cost, um, out of Franklin County and especially with the school closures, um, that we should be aggressively developing a plan perhaps for some of this space so that we can seriously and intentionally be looking at bringing those children back in their home county. Uh, and I want to see that cost benefit analysis so that we understand, is there, is there a cost savings there? And if so, what is it and what does that program look like? Also have a question on Medicaid reimbursement, um, their facilities portion of their budget. Um, and I think that's the only other closing remark I will make and we'll deal with this later this afternoon. Um, I will propose to my board that we, uh, reduce the personal property tax rate to $2.35 from 241, uh, with deference to, um, the increases from last year and also having done some locality comparisons, which I can share with my colleagues. If we're looking to, at comparability, Bedford has a $2.35 rate on their personal property. But I, I just think that, you know, in terms of looking at what we're going to set for a tax rate, uh, for this reassessment period, I will say fundamentally that I understand the need that we've got operating costs, uh, that are inflationary. We've got our, our formula-driven allocations like the jails as an example. The regional jail has an increase of $600,000 in one year. We've, we've got pressures that some of which we have no control over and this board, uh, since I've been on the board going into my fifth year, we have never adjusted for inflationary factors in our budget. And so I can easily make the case that we need to keep a few cents on the equal, you know, but over and above the equalization rate to address these things, but I look forward to a conversation with my colleagues to try to decide of the things, where, where is that rate below 45? What is it and what are we expecting out of it? So that we can be very informed about what we're not funding and the consequences of what we're not funding in addition to what we decide we are going to fund. Because I think that, um, I, I was very, I, I, and you all know, I've been very disturbed, um, about services that are on the verge of being compromised. I had a conversation with, you know, staff five or six months ago, um, where can we cut? Any more cuts that are done to this current budget is going to impact service delivery. So the question then becomes, are the citizens willing to, to have less services? Are they willing to have the, uh, green box sites open less? Are they willing to have less deputies on the road? What are the consequences? Do they want our parks looking decent? You know, do we want to make sure we're focusing on quality of life issues for our citizens? There's a myriad of things that we're in charge for in terms of how we budget and to say that we don't have budgetary increases, um, that are upon us and they have got to be dealt with would be very disingenuous, I think, for me to say. I can't say that and I think that we really have to roll our sleeves up with these departments as we're asking for to find out really in some cases, does it need to be in this year's budget? If not, can we trend it in over a few years or can it wait? Those questions are going to have everything to do with how we roll up to a balanced budget. So, Mr. Chairman, that's the summation of my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I think we can, uh, answer one question here. Everybody seems to be interested and I am as well, in the Farm Bureau Poultry Enterprise Project. In our work session on March 21st, they're going to be here and do the proposal and everything will be at that time of day. Okay. Mr. Tatum?
All right. I would like to echo my colleagues and complimenting staff on putting together this budget. Uh, I know a lot of hours went into it and a lot of things taken into consideration. I too, I mean, all of us would like to see the tax rate, uh, be as low as we could possibly set it. You know, right now we're at 61. The proposed budget has it going back to 45. Is that, uh, as low as we can go? I don't know. I will say this, if we go any lower, from what I've looked at, if we go any lower, then we've got to make some tough decisions on what gets cut out of this budget and what are we willing to take out of this budget? Not saying that I'm pro or, or, or against, you know, going lower. Uh, I'd like to see and give it some consideration. Again, I, I think that it's a, for me, it's a responsible budget. I think that the staff did a, a really good job. As far as the school budget goes, I'm not going to beat a dead horse. I think I said my piece last week when I said I will not support a school budget that includes, that includes closing schools and I haven't changed my mind. In case I sound kind of funny, I, allergies are kicking my butt right now and my head just feels like it's just stopped up completely. So if I, if, if you have a hard time understanding me, just holler at me and I'll try to speak louder. But, uh, you know, the county has needs, we have growth needs, we have, uh, capital needs that need to be covered. We have, uh, inflationary pressures that, that we have to cover. Inflation hits us all and that included the county's budget. And, uh, I'm not going to put a lot in it. I do have a couple of questions for public safety. Uh, there's a, a pickup truck for animal control. I, I was looking at it and it had some numbers that seemed to be a little high to me. I would like some clarification on that, uh, for the sheriff. I know, uh, with the school closing, a couple of elementary schools, have you factored in that, does not need two of those SRO positions? Other than that, I think it's a solid budget. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Tim. All right, I, uh, so I suppose what I see here, uh, just as an overview, uh, for staff, y'all follow, the supervisors, please follow with me. We want to talk to, uh, school staff, uh, about stopgap funding and other questions, public safety, uh, uh, with Paul Chapman, Kevin Tosh, uh, to review the capital schedule and the sheriff about the SROs. Does that pretty much cover everything? Mike?
One thing, Mr. Chairman, since Mr. Mitchell brought it up, the Town of Rocky Mount Fire Truck, uh, I would like to see some discussion amongst the board during this budget process as to what we're going to do about that truck. Uh, are we going to fund it? Are we not going to fund it? I have spoken on numerous occasions about my support for the Rocky Mount Fire Department. May not be shared by the rest of you all, that's fine, it's my district, but I think we need to put that matter to rest once and for all during this budget process. One proposal I'll make, if, if you don't have an appetite for the 2 million paying for the latter truck, could we discuss paying the 1.2 for the first truck they bought? And that would solve, we're, we're paying for a fire truck for them. And then whatever caveats you all are interested in attaching to that process, but I think we owe it to the town, I think we owe it to the constituents to decide once and for all what we're going to do about this fire truck issue. And, and I want the citizens and the constituents to know, all of these things come at a price tag and that price tag is taxes. So when you call me or you email, mail me or my constituents on this board, asking for this stuff, be prepared to pay the, the tax price for it because that's how it's paid for.
We'll bring that up and have to talk about that because with my understanding and with consensus of the board, that we would bring that up with that memorandum of understanding and we need to talk about that. We'll do that, we'll do that in our next session.
Mr. Chairman? I might want to add to your list, maybe if it'd be Brandy Ross or for the county leases for the different buildings.
Will you, will you say that again, please?
I think Brandy would be the one to speak to, to add to your list about the, uh, county leases we have for different things. Mr. Quinn brought that up and I'm interested in that as well.
Okay. About lease agreements. All right, did I miss anything else? Mr. Quinn?
Mike, just regarding your comment with the fire truck, one thing that would help me, uh, being the new person, I know that there was an agreement, uh, where we give them $60,000 a year and I don't know what was meant to be in that agreement. I haven't seen the agreement, but it would really help to understand what the author's intent was for that agreement. For example, is it just operating expenses? Was it meant to be a capital contribution? Uh, I, I really don't know and it would be really interesting to go back to that first agreement and figure out, oh, what was that for? And so, and then look at the new fire truck in the context of that agreement to better understand what we could do.
I'll, can I answer it briefly?
Yes, sir.
That first memorandum, they came to us, the former mayor, because they do call- because they do calls outside of the town limits, they wanted compensation for that. We give most of the other departments approximately $26,000 a year. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Whitlow, there was a formula that came up with what we should pay per call. So we adjusted what they gave the town of Rocky Mount up to roughly $90,000 a year to compensate them for going outside the town limits, sort of in a nutshell.
All right, let's table this for now. We got to get this other stuff done for the time. And we'll go back into this this evening and talk about it as long as y'all want to, okay? I promise on that. All right, we need to get back here now. Go back to your papers that were here with the hearing on the proposed budget and considering the ordinance. Let's do this one first. A hearing to consider an ordinance. And this is the Franklin County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing on Monday, March 25th, 2024, at 6:00, or soon thereafter, in the boardroom located here, right here where we're at. To amend taxation article, real estate taxes, generally exemption of elderly persons and the totally and permanently disabled of the Code of Franklin County. And then the second paragraph is what we was talking about, or it's what the county's proposing, or staff proposed to amend the existing county taxation article two, Real Estate Taxes Division One Generally, in section 2018. The amendment provides additional tax exemption by increasing the combined gross income limit from $25,000 to $38,000, and increasing the combined net worth limit from $80,000 to $110,000. How you feel about that? What you, what you got to say?
Things been a long time needed.
Long time needed.
I have a question and a comment. So the first is, I wondered, is this an either/or? So if you satisfy one, but you don't satisfy the other, do you get this tax benefit? Or do you have to satisfy both of these conditions? Meaning, does your income have to be below this amount? And does your combined net worth have to be below that amount? Is it one or the other, or you have to satisfy both?
Mr. Carter? Or Mr. Whitlow, one of y'all?
It's actually both, the way it is written, that you would satisfy both of those components, Mr. Quinn. Both the income limit and the asset limit, is my understanding.
Thank you. And then, this isn't for this year, but just a consideration for future years. I like the way the land use program works, where it's not a pure tax holiday.
Now, we getting on something else there, land use.
No, no, I'm making a comparison to how the land use program works, where it's not a complete tax holiday. Instead, the tax forgiveness accrues and becomes payable at some point. I think it'd be interesting for this program to work in the same manner, where the tax, the tax is not due in the current year for these categories of people. However, it would accrue, and upon passing, it could be payable to the county. So not for consideration this year, but for the future. I think it's really interesting to have this program work like land use, where it's not a holiday, but instead the tax liability accrues until passing.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may. I would have a hard time with that. I think that if you're giving a tax break to someone that truly deserves this tax break, and then upon their passing, whoever their heirs are, I think would be putting an undue burden on their heirs at a very difficult time, you know? Here they lose a family member and they inherit some property, and then we're going to pop them with back taxes to, on this property. That's where I'm at on it.
Anybody under any comment? I don't like, I don't like going back on the family either, on that. So this, this proposal as ready, as writ. How do y'all feel? What do you want to do about it? Just don't call a question yet.
Oh, okay, okay.
I'm not going to call a question yet. I want to make sure everybody has said what they want to say.
For me personally, Mr. Chairman, I think it's long past due, and I think it'll give some relief to some folks that really need it. I totally support it.
Do we have any idea, staff, on how much money we're raising this? That, how much money we talking about? Have you got any kind of preliminary figure?
Do you want to take it, Mr. Carter? We looked at this previously.
We did look at it previously. The impact, it's difficult to know, because we don't know the income levels of the citizens of the county. So, but realistically, looking at the current levels and the impact, it would be what we considered negligible by raising it to the overall county budget. So it's somewhere between the tax relief, excuse me, and all of them, is somewhere probably about $500,000, $600,000 when you combine this program with the veterans, tax exemption for veterans. So it's not a, it's not a grand sum of money, but it certainly is impactful to these individuals who fall within these categories.
Okay, so we're talking somewhere generally around $500,000 to $600,000?
That would be for all. Yeah, that would be, that's for all today. So if you increase it, it'll go up some, but we don't, it's difficult to estimate. So what we've done with our proposed budget is assuming that some of that loss in real estate is factored in with what we've conservatively budgeted with our proposed revenue.
So that's where you consider making the money up at?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Does that raise any more questions to clarify? Any more comments? All right, I'll call a question.
I'll offer a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I would make a motion that the Board of Supervisors approve advertising via public notice for amendment to the existing county code, chapter 20, taxation article two, Real Estate Taxes Division One, generally in section 20-18, with the amendments as stated, with changes to $38,000 and $110,000 respectively.
Second.
We got a second? Any other comment? Madam Clerk, we do a roll call, please.
Yes.
Ma'am, will you speak into your mic, please? Thank you.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor, Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Okay. All right, if you go on the next paper that we have there, on the second one, classes of property. We've got the tax levies there to go up from the $0.45, 100. Personal property is $2.41 per 100. Personal pro, that was on personal property. Then the personal property for equipment was $189 per 100. And levy on machinery and tools was $0.70 per 100. And merchants' capital was $1.08 per 100 assessed. I wanted to talk in our afternoon, when we come back, about some other taxes. I wanted to address those again, the mills tax, cigarette tax, rooms and hotels, and the tipple fees to address them. If we want to do anything with those, do they have to be in this as well?
They can be, Mr. Chairman. They do not have to be as part of the general property taxes. They can be amended anytime throughout the year. So, you know, if there was a need for additional revenue regarding the budget and so forth, we can have that discussion as part of the budget process. And as long as, you know, those levies and so forth can be, can change, you know, between now and the start of the next fiscal year, if that were the pleasure of the board.
Okay. All right, as these are proposed, we can talk about each one of them on an individual basis. And I think, I think we should do that so that everybody's clear. But you need to keep in mind that we can come down. We can come down, but we can't go up. So keeping that in mind, this is just proposed today. It does not mean that's what it's going to be. We can come down, but we can't go up. So keeping that in mind, let's talk about, let's just, let's just take, go right down through there. Number one, the $0.45 on the real estate. Anybody got any comment or questions? It's probably, I mean, you know, probably gives each and every one of us heartburn. But you got to start, you know, I told a car salesman, you know, the guy coming around, and I was dealing with him, I said, well, it doesn't matter where we start, it's where we stop that counts. And he didn't know how to answer that question. You start anywhere you want to, but where you stop is where it counts. So with that in, with that in mind, the $0.45, any question?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to echo what you said, that we can come down, but not go up to the public. That we can come down, this is proposed, and how we're advertising it.
Yes, sir. It's going to be proposed as, or it's going to be advertised as a proposed budget. We need to emphasize that, highlight that, underline it, put it in parentheses, in italic marks, and put English writing on it. All right, let's go to number two. The tax levy on the personal property, 2.41. You know, I like the personal property, the cigarette tax and all of that. I said this before, that's a user tax. You know, you pay it, and another thing, too, keeping in mind, not trying to pick on anybody, but that gets our renters and everybody else, not just the property owners, people that rent in the county and all of that. So any comment on the number two?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm sorry, Mr. Carter.
That's all right. I had that in my notes and left it out initially, but I would concur with Ms. Smith's comments. I think we could definitely trim that back a little bit, because the vehicle values are going up. And if we could pull that back to 235, I would like to see that happen. And to echo what you all said, these are all proposed rates, it's just a starting place for the board.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, you know, I reiterate my earlier statement. I am in full support of lowering to $2.35. And really, the primary rationale, as Mr. Carter has stated, last year, you know, valuations on personal property went really high. And we did not adjust it as we did the prior year before. So I think now's the time to do it. And I'm not sure what that total number of impact is going to be on the budget, but I would like to see what that is, just in summation at some point.
Mr. Tatum?
I'd just like to say, I also concur that I would like to see that go to 235. But before I make a final decision, I would want to see how it would impact our budget.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to bringing it down either. But do we have to do it today? Because we can come down. We can come down tomorrow, but we can't go up tomorrow. And that'll give staff time to look at the potential revenue. We may need Mr. Tarnson on that, for the vehicles, but we can do that. You know, I agree with that. How do y'all feel about that?
Yeah, advertise what we got.
Advertise what we got, but we can come down, yeah.
Yes.
I really look for, I'd like to see the number one, that number come down, too. You know, all right, number three, personal property, the $189 per 100. Heavy construction, but not limit to land movers, bulldozers, front-end loaders, graders, packers, power shovel, cranes, pile drivers, forest harvesting, and saliva, salivical culture, activity, equipment ditch, and other types of diggers owned by businesses pursuant to the authority. The $189 per 100, any, you going to say that word, that big word?
No. But just like what we just said, we can go down, we can't come up.
Okay.
I'd say stay with what's there, and we can give it further discussion.
Okay, and then, number four, same thing? Number five, same thing? Man, y'all difficult. Y'all difficult, making things hard. All right, any more, anything to say? Any questions or comments? Keeping in mind, as we've all said, and we can come down, but we can't go up. And our hope and goal is to come down. Mr. Mitchell?
Chairman, I would like to echo what you said on the, you know, on your, on your personal property, you do collect that from everyone. And everyone has a choice on what they can do on personal property. When you're buying your vehicle, you can pick what you want, and it goes up and down. But if you're already, if you're renting from someone, you don't have a choice. When their property value goes up, your rent goes up.
Most of the time.
So I would, I would lean toward, I don't know, maybe meeting in the middle on that, with the personal property and the real estate.
All right. No more comment, then I'll entertain a motion.
I'll offer a motion, Mr. Chairman. I would offer a motion that we, that we recommend the proposed tax levies to be advertised by the county administrator, items one through five, at the current rates listed.
Second.
Any more comment? Madam Clerk, will you do a roll call, please?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
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 Chairman Thompson?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Takes care of that. Any more housekeeping we need to do, Mr. Whitlow?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the advertisement for the budget, of course, is the proposed FY 24-25 budget. There before you, you see the total amounts. And of course, any of those program areas, as I know, we've taken a lot of notes here, budgets certainly are fluid through the process. And so, but categorically, the tax rates as proposed would fund the proposed budget that has been before you. And so we would need to hold a public hearing on that portion as well, the actual budget and the expenditures. And of course, they can be modified through the budget process before the budget's finally adopted.
Okay, did you understand the statement there that was made? It's my understanding that we need to advertise for the budget as proposed. Now, keep in mind, the money that is proposed here is what balanced the budget. So if we take a dollar away here, then we got to find a way to put it back over here for this. So that's going to be incumbent upon us to do that. So any questions or comment about the budget? Hearing none? Hearing none? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we advertise the budget, proposed budget as presented by staff.
I'll give a second?
A second.
Got a motion on the table and a second? Any more comments? Madam Clerk, we do a roll call.
Yes.
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 All right.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question of the county administrator?
Sure.
Or yourself. I don't know, I was reading the state code over the weekend, and I'm interested in knowing if there is any expanded language on tax relief for our veterans. It seems that the language that we have in our current ordinances in many ways replicates what we're allowed to do under Dillon's rule. But then there was some kind of intonation that there was something in 2020- Um, but then there was some kind of intonation that there was something in twenty-twenty-one, um, but if, if you could just maybe look and see if there's any further latitude, um, to help our veterans.
We, we can look into that.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
All right, it was brought to my attention earlier, and I know that we've talked about it today earlier, about, uh, the adopting the budget and having a couple hearings at the same time. Has that been worked out? This is to your question that you asked earlier, Mr. Earl, yes?
To my understanding, uh, Chairm, Mr. Chairman, the, um, yeah, so what we will do is we will have one public hearing on the proposed budget and the tax rates that are to fund that budget. And then we will have a second public hearing, which will be April eighth-ish, um, based on the consensus of the board, for the effective tax rate based on the real estate reassessment. At that time, then the board would be able to approve and adopt the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget and set the tax rates for that next fiscal year. So that would be the schedule, we will be looking forward to two public hearings. Uh, and so another one coming up after what we voted on today, uh, for the, the effective tax rate increase, uh, based on the reassessment required by code because the assessed value exceeds one percent from the prior four-year reassessment. And so, um, we, we are, we are on task with the board's action today to meet all of those deadlines. Yes, sir.
Okay, so we got, we got our ducks in a row.
That's correct.
So basically, we done a level, understand it right, we did, we, the forty-one cent was level funding, that's the rate adjustment.
Correct.
Equalization.
Yes.
And then a proposed four-cent tax increase. Proposed-
Yes.
Four-cent tax increase.
That's right.
Okay. Sheriff not meaning to put you on the spot and talk, if you're not comfortable, say so. But there's been a couple questions about, uh, SROs, and then about your proposal that you could help with code enforcement, with, with your staff. Can you address those two questions? Floor is yours. I don't want to put you on staff, I'll point that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, I always entertain your questions, and hopefully I can give you some more information or update in any way possible. Uh, as related to the, uh, code enforcement, uh, I did make the comment, and I will stand by that, that we could utilize our SROs, in particular during the summer months, which will be a longer period of time this year, because school is out, uh, late May, but does not start until late August, so it's more time there. Um, I would say that we need to continue to work with county, uh, certainly in looking over our code, uh, code section, and, uh, there's, I know there's probably, uh, been some strategic thought as to updating and doing some of those areas to make it more, um, certainly understandable from all perspective, from, uh, law enforcement, from county, the courts, and certainly from your perspective, uh, maybe the update of being more clear and understanding, especially to our public.
If, uh, so what we'll, we'll ask is staff to get with you and, uh, with our county attorney, and, uh, I suppose you're gonna have the backing of the board, everybody shaking their head yes, to do what we need to do to get that, uh, in effect.
Yes, sir. Be glad to.
Well, you know, we gotta start somewhere and do that. And now the, well, the SROs, how you come along?
Uh, be glad to try to answer any questions you may have in regarding to our SO program. Where we stand right now is currently at fifteen, and with the closure of two schools, uh, we could easily move those two SROs into, uh, the, primarily the high school and middle school, which would give us a full staff, as far as it relates to the number we initially talked about, which was seventeen SROs.
But with the closing of the two schools, could we just not do away with two?
Well, that, we, we could, but the plan was initially, we'd just have to adjust the plan. The plan was to have two at the high school and two at the middle school, and currently that we just have one there at each of those schools. Now, the Rocky Mount Police Department has one there as well, uh, but we were looking initially when, when we talked about would be, there would be three there for the size and the complexity of both schools, the middle school and the high school.
Does that raise any questions, Mr. Chairman?
All the elementary schools currently covered.
All the elementary schools are currently covered, yes. Mm-hmm. And that just happened, uh, with the most recent two hires that we had that started helping us cover Rocky Mount and Liam Wade.
How many does, how many SROs does the town furnish?
Two.
One at the high school?
And one at the middle school.
And just for a point of clarity, that was two, that's two that you have that we, that we agreed on that have, you have not hired, so those two positions, so when the two elementary schools move those toward the high school and the middle school, the two we're talking about not doing, you haven't hired yet, those are still unfilled positions?
Correct. That would give us fifteen with these most two recent hires, which, all the elementary schools, but would still have us not meeting the two we wanted for the high school and middle school. And with the closure of, uh, Burn Chimney and Henry, those positions would be transferred to the high school and middle school.
And so with those-
That was the plan.
Right, and with those two closed, that would effectively make you full staffed on that.
Correct.
So you're full staff now, you hired the other two? I think the last time-
Yes, with, with the closure, going into next school year, we would be fully staffed, yes.
Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You may not be able to answer this, Sheriff, the two Rocky Mount police officers, how are they paid? Is the town paying for that, or is the school paying for that? And Mr. Terry's here, and he may be able to answer that.
That's a great question. They may come under, uh, the school division.
Could, did you hear my question, Mr. Chair-
Yes, sir, I did, Mr. Carter. Um, essentially, the schools fund four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars between the county and the town of Rocky Mount. The county receives three hundred and eighty-six thousand of that, and the town of Rocky Mount fifty thousand for two officers.
Okay, thank you.
Any more?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Terry?
Mr. Terry?
I, I, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Quick question, um, I've been reviewing the school's budget, so is that amount of money currently programmed in the school's adopted budget for twenty-four, twenty-five?
It has already been in there for this year and is programmed for next year.
For next year, it is?
Yes.
At, at three hundred thousand?
Yes, same, same amount.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Mr. Terry. Appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, I would just make one comment to the board. I think we need to keep in mind, um, it's not in this year's budget, but it will, probably the way the grant runs, maybe the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget, we've got to fund a little over a million dollars of new money-
Yeah.
-for the SROs.
We do.
So, we just need to keep that in mind, you know, we're in a budget year that we're looking at, but we've got to continue to focus on the requirements, not the, not the wants, but the requirements of what we've committed to moving forward.
Yep, that's in the back of, uh, every, should be in the back of every supervisor's mind. At some point, some point, we're gonna have to pay for that, when them grants run out. And what was, get, tell us, remind us again, the life of those grants?
Four-year period.
Four years?
There's, there's three grants that we have active at this point.
May, may I add, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, um, to that point, the proposed budget that you have before you begins to phase in to build up to that, approximately four hundred thousand in ongoing new commitment to the SROs and the proposed budget. So it would not, you know, it's gonna hit, but we're trying to soften that hit, and so as part of the proposed budget that you have before you.
Okay. All right, well, now they gotta get to, get this out to the newspaper. We'll take a break, we'll take a break and come back at four o'clock, is, Madam Clerk is, it's here. All right, uh, we'll take a break until four o'clock, uh, we can go in the, uh, county administrators over there in that office. Uh, B seventy-five is being set up for, uh, uh, planning and zoning tonight. So we'll come back in here, or you can bring your sandwich back here, wherever you're comfortable with. I'd rather go back there so that, all right, and we'll be back here at four o'clock, and then at four o'clock, we'll start our roundtable discussion. Thank you. All right, now we're going to get into, uh, our meeting now, and this will be, we've got a couple of the department heads, uh, don't want to put nobody on the spot, because I know that this was a, uh, we were just gonna have a, uh, work session, we're gonna go into our work session, and, uh, if, uh, if there's a question that comes up and you're comfortable with answering it, we would, uh, appreciate and enjoy your input. If you're not comfortable with answering it, say I'm not comfortable, but, and that will be taken up in, uh, Thursday's work session, not the Tuesday, that's a, uh, an agenda meeting, but on next Thursday, that's where, uh, you can do that. But if you're prepared to answer any questions, uh, you department heads, uh, uh, when it comes up, please feel free to do that. Now, I'm gonna open it up, the floor up now to, uh, the supervisors, each one of us, uh, we did our little talk where we wanted to see things going in the first part of the meeting, and we had to take the vote so we could get it to press. The, the deadline was, uh, five o'clock, and it's already been taken care of, and, uh, the language and everything, so our phones will be ringing off the hook in a couple days saying that we're gonna raise taxes that much, but I know it's been put in our proposed and all of that, and it's your fault, Margaret, and I'm gonna send them to your office. (laughing) And I'm gonna say, say it's Margaret's fault, they gotta go to see the Commissioner of Revenue, Ms. Torrance. And so with that being said, uh, uh, Mr. Tatum has to leave and go to work, so he wants to get his, and he won't be here to, uh, he's gotta go to work, go to college, so Tim, it's all yours.
All right. I'd just like to, uh, again, say, uh, how much I appreciate the staff putting in the hard work into this budget, and I, I wanna comment, you know, we are advertising a forty-five cent tax rate, which will be a four cent-
Excuse, excuse me. I, I, I want you supervisors to, to, to be free at this time, not interrupting, but if there's a comment or something that you need to add to while one of the others is doing it, you know, do it, so we can help. You know, just feel free that we can talk amongst ourselves. I'm sorry, Tim.
That's okay. But, you know, we, we know that, uh, you know, we're advertising a forty-five cent, uh, tax rate and the other tax rates, and all of us would like to see those rates come down if possible. None of us like to pay more, uh, than, than we have to. Uh, I have elderly parents that are on a fixed income, on, all of us have family members and friends that are that way, and, but with that said, we also have to remember that we are, we do have ec, economic and inflational pressures and pressures of continuously moving forward. Uh, that's why I have, uh, told the county administrator and his staff that I think that this, the budget is a solid budget. Does that mean it doesn't need to be, have some tweaking, uh, tightening up in some places? Sure, we can look at those places. But a couple places I want to see emphasis put, in the last several years, we have put a lot of duties on our Parks and Rec with Summit View Business Park and the other additions of other parks in the county, and we ask more and more every year, and, and we're not keeping up with the, the staff. I mean, and plus, you, you, you have some staff that are getting close to retirement age too, is my understanding, so all that has to be addressed. So I, I certainly want to see, and I appreciate county, uh, staff putting that into the budget, and I wanna, I wanna see that continued. And also, we have, uh, with Kevin Tosh back here, our Director of Tourism, it's his job to sell Franklin County and sell our brand, and I think he's doing a wonderful job with, with the activities that he plans, and, and shows Franklin County in such a positive light that makes people want to come here for not only their vacation, but make them want to come here and live. And so, uh, I'd like, you know, make sure that we are giving him the tools that he needs to do the best job possible. And I'd be remiss if I didn't, uh, mention Margaret is here, and her staff with twice year tax collection, we put that in place a few years back, we put an extra burden on her office, and we haven't, uh, haven't get her, given her much help to do her job. And I, I think, uh, that the position that she has asked for, uh, is one that I think it could possibly pay for itself, in the way that she's able to find delinquent taxes and, and go after and collect some of our delinquent taxes that are not currently being collected. Uh, I'd like to see us give her the help that, that she needs in that position to, you know, make sure that we're collecting all the taxes that are due. And, you know, none of us like paying them, but we all have responsibilities, and we, we have to pay our taxes, and, and I'd like to see us give her that help that she needs there. Um, I appreciate the sheriff has already, has spoken that he has taken consideration of school closures and, and factoring, uh, two of those SRO positions. You know, again, I'm, I'm not gonna say anything that you haven't already heard, I think it's a solid budget, uh, you know, but can we tighten it up a little bit? Sure. And, uh, you know, it's, it's a challenging year, but, uh, as we've, many of us have told Chris and Brian for the last several months, we know things are tough, we know we want to go as low as we can with the tax rate, but we have to give them some funds to operate and keep moving forward. If we keep cutting and cutting and cutting, my next question was, okay, what positions are you, you willing to cut out, and what services are you ready to cut out? Because that's kind of where we're at. If, uh, and I've always been pay as you go for as much as you can, and, you know, you get what you pay for. I firmly believe that you get what you pay for. And, uh, you know, if we start getting too, too narrow and, and tying Brian and, and Chris and staff's hands back by cutting back too much, you know, too deep in the, in the funding of this year's budget, then, you know, we're gonna suffer the consequences. We want to keep the county moving forward, and, and we want to be mindful of people's, uh, you know, pressures on, on our individual citizens in the county with inflation, as what it is. Uh, Chris, regional jail went up on a six hundred-plus thousand again this year, and it was about six hundred thousand last year they went up as well, was it?
That's right, and, Mr. Tatum, that's not necessarily the regional jail going up per se, um, they have, uh, on per diems, on occasion have raised per diems, but that's, that's a sheer indication of our increase in the number of inmates.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, the more inmates we have at the regional jail, the more we pay, and the same thing on our debt service.
So, you know, that, that, that's a huge, but we can't build a jail for what we can, you know, be in, you know, with them, so I think it's a good investment, uh, you know. So with that said, I'm not gonna, like, beat it, continuously beat a dead horse, I just think that I want to make sure that we look after, uh, our departments that are in, in dire need, and I think Parks and Rec is one of those, I think, our economic development, our tourism, and I think Margaret's office needs the help that she's requesting.
You got any questions of any of the department heads that are here?
No, uh, I, I've spoken to some of them prior-
Already?
And, and, uh, before today, and, um-
If any questions arise from anyone between, after today's meeting, before next Thursday, be sure to let staff know so that we can have that department head here, in our Thursday meeting, okay? Keep your head down.
I will, I'm gonna get-
Keep your head down.
Y'all have a good week.
All right. Who's next? Anybody else ready to go? Anybody? All right, all right?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Really don't have much more to say than what I said, uh, initially, but I do think, moving forward, if we can utilize those SROs for code enforcement to get us over the hump, we should swap that out for a position for the Commissioner of Revenue's office. She is the only department that brings money to the county, other than taxes, and I think it's important to make her department as strong as possible. I don't know how much longer Ms. Torrance has on her term, but she's gonna be leaving the county one of these days, and I think it's important to have people in place that know what's going on so we can move forward, uh, in the future. know what's going on so we can move forward in the future. If you all are interested, now that Mr. Tatum has left, I don't know, do you want to discuss this fire truck, this Rocky Mount fire truck?
You got the floor, buddy.
Well, what do you all think of my proposal? Instead of doing the ladder truck, if we can work out a new memorandum of understanding, we pay for the first truck they bought, which was a little over a million dollars versus 2.5 or 2.2.
Mike, I think we already offered them a million dollars one time. They, they, you all but begged them to take it.
You, you all but begged them to take it, and they wouldn't do it.
They didn't take it, that's, so that's the same proposal in my eyes.
I mean, you all, you, you practically did...
I got offered it three times and was turned down.
Three times, and they turned it down.
That was, that was the equivalent of fifty thousand dollars a year, that was the equivalent of a million dollars, so that'd be, that'd be the same thing. That's just my opinion.
So, I mean, the rest of you, say what you need to...
I mean, speak up.
I mean, say what you got to say, this, this is, this is a different kind of meeting, this, wanted to talk about that. I mean, it wa, it was offered to them, they've asked, they've asked for a meeting, the, the mayor and their town manager with Switlow and myself. And we're going to try to do that next week, and talk to them about that memorandum of understanding, and, you know, a couple of other things to see what's there, and we'll try to set that up. Chris, see if we can do that before Thursday's meeting, before Thursday's meeting, and see if we can, you know, we'll talk to them, and, and I'll put that in there and tell them, and tell them what you said. Lori?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have offered them a million dollars, it was turned down three times, and I'm going to hold on to my premise, you know, I've initially stayed very consistent about the MOU being revisited as a fundamental piece to decide what the relationship's going to look like. My cursory view, review of that MOU is, the only difference is capital, is that we exempted capital, or somebody exempted capital when that was done, meaning that we're not buying apparatus, right? So I think if we want to recodify an MOU, but this board's got to make a fundamental decision about whether we're going to agree to fund some level of capital for that department, and I think we've got enough pressures on us right now, quite frankly, and if they're willing to come under public safety, I, I would be very supportive of that. I think that's reasonable. They, you know, I know that I've been told, you know, we've ordered the two fire trucks, we'll just pay for them, quote unquote, and they're just continuing to milk this thing along, and it's, it's losing its validity with me, you know, from the initial conversation that we had. So you come under public safety, we can revisit the MOU without question, I, I will not, for my vote, vote to put capital in, in the MOU, I would have it stand as it is.
You want else?
I'd like to see the, and understand the basis for the original MOU, which gives them ninety thousand a year, so it's hard, it's hard to make a judgment on the fire truck without looking at the whole picture, for me.
Have you got a copy of the original, of the, the now MOU?
I don't.
Maybe if you can get with staff and let them get you a copy of that.
We'll redistribute that to the board, Mr. Chairman.
And have that, and have that, that might help, help you some. Mr. Quinn?
Let me ask this of the board, if they were willing to come under public safety, what are your all's thoughts then about purchasing the truck?
Well, they'd go into the rotation.
I, I mean, it, I don't have a problem, it's like, for my part, I, I'm, I'm with you, we offered it, we offered them the truck and they wouldn't take it, how do we, how do we make them take it? That's the whole thing, it was offered to them.
Well, their, their consensus was, we didn't offer the ladder truck, they, I think their comeback was, it was not enough money, if I remember correctly.
Well, I think it came back to, if you take it over the twenty years and add in the interest and everything else, and it doesn't come close, and that goes back to my point earlier, about what it's costing them in interest to tie that up for over twenty years. I forget what the, they had the totals then, and I can't remember what they were.
Well, one of them was 1.4.
One's 2.5 on the left.
But I mean, what the financed cost was.
Okay.
After it was financed over twenty years, it was a lot of money, and that's what they were saying when we offered them the million, over a quarter, fifty thousand dollars a year over the course of twenty years, they're saying that wouldn't even, that wouldn't even cover the principal, much less the interest on a twenty-year note.
Okay.
So that's where their argument was, and that's, to my point, is finance one for ten years, you're going to get a lower interest rate, and it's going to be a lot cheaper, but when you're doing two for twenty, that's a pile of interest on that kind of money, which I'm, I'm sure Brian could work us up some amortization schedules.
Oh, he already knows the answer to it. He's an accountant.
Actually, we, we talked about it earlier, but, um, that was their comeback was, that doesn't even cover the principal, much less the interest on a note.
Well, can we leave it, if you're going to meet with them, and you all have a discussion, then maybe come back, and, and the board can discuss it again, and we can put this to bed once this is all...
Yes, sir, yes, sir, I made my notes.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Any more discussion with the...
I would just ask, what is going to be, what do we want our chairman to communicate on this issue in that meeting?
That's up to you guys.
I would say whether they're going to come under public safety or not.
Pardon?
Whether they're going to come under public safety or not.
Yeah, they've made it clear, no.
I got that, they already made that clear, but...
Twice.
I've got it wrote down again.
Yeah, but that's still, for me...
Was that a deal killer?
It was for Mayor Perdue.
It was for them, yes.
For us.
No, we'll take them under public safety, they didn't want to.
I think, I think, I think the...
They say no, that's their call, right?
Sure.
If they say yes, where we go. If they say yes, they will come under public safety.
They don't want to come under public safety.
If they say yes, if they come under public safety, what do we do? I mean, what are we willing to do?
It'd be like Lori, it'd be no different than any other department, being a rotation.
It would, it would be a...
They would have to go into the rotation, just like all the rest of the fire departments.
And they have ordered this truck already, though.
They've ordered two trucks.
Right.
A ladder truck and a tanker, I think. Does that sound right, Mike?
Yes, they, they ordered the tanker first, I think, and then the ladder truck.
One, one of them was like 1.2, and one was like 1.4.
Mm-hmm.
Roughly numbers.
The ladder truck's like a two million.
Yeah, the ladder was 2.5, wasn't it?
2.5 million, okay.
So go ahead and order it, and then you have to pay for it.
Right.
Really.
Well, regardless what the rest of y'all decide, we have to maintain a working relationship with the town.
That's correct.
We're all in the same boat, rowing along, and for me, I, I assume I'll wait until you all meet with them and see what they come back with, and you all can tell them the tenor of the board, as I've told Mayor Holland, I've always been very supportive of the town and the fire department for the fifteen-thousandth time, but I only have one vote, and it's going to take four to make this happen, so that's sort of where we're at, as far as I'm concerned. Okay.
Mr. Torrance, while you're here, are you prepared to talk a little bit about the assessment, and...
About the assessment?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll try.
Thank you. You want to come up here, you want to do it from back there? When you speak into the mic, it seems to help a whole lot. I got a couple of questions, it's been, seems to be the answer, the questions that everybody's asking. How did your, the meetings go? Were they...
They went real well, we had a thousand and forty-seven appeals.
Thousand and how many?
A thousand and forty-seven, and we had several canceled, but they're still working on the numbers now, because they had to go back and do all their research and look, look into all the issues, so they're working now to finalize those, and hopefully by the end of this week, they'll have the notices out.
Seemed like some of the most common complaints that the board were getting was that they didn't come to the property.
Well, you know, it's like anything, you can't macro-manage people, they were contracted to do that, they said they did that, and I have no way of knowing, I mean, they put cards in the doors, the wind could have blown them away, it's a lot of things that could have happened.
Yes, ma'am.
But, and it's just like every employer, they have good employees and bad, so I'm sure, I can't vouch that everyone did what they said they were going to do, but they were certainly instructed to do that.
And it was very plain on the assessment notices when they get out, the notice of appeal and everything. Now, they will still have the opportunity, the citizens, to go to the board's own appeal after everything is done, if they want to reject or...
Yeah, that's correct.
Will be set up then.
Yeah, and the Circuit Court judge has already, he's already appointed the board, we've got the training and the certification set up for March 21st here in this building here, and once they're certified, then at that point, by code, I'd have to go back and read it, but I think you have to allow forty-five days to your first hearing, so that gives the taxpayer time to gather all their data before they actually come to their hearing. So we have to schedule the first one out forty-five days, so it's going to be a process, but that can occur after we do the book, so, I mean, I think the adjustments that could possibly be made there will be very nominal.
Alright, now, this, this goes to the Boone District, you know the trouble that we've having with the water on Pasol Court, and I've asked, asked your office to look into that, and I know you have. How's that going?
What we're looking to do there, we're still gathering information from the DEQ, because we don't know if this is a permanent thing, a temporary thing, is it a year out? If the water doesn't clear up on its own, because I've been told they've already removed the tank, the source of the leak, and the contaminated soil, so with all that gone, whether it'll actually fix itself in time, I don't know. There's, I think they said eighteen houses affected, but we couldn't find quite that many, so we're still reaching out to them to get a list of every house that could be affected, but we're looking at putting an economic depreciation on it, but we would have to track it so that when the water is tested and it's back to normal, that we could go in there and take that economic factor off. But another thing too, if they have sales in that area, that'll help us, we don't really know that, that this would even affect the sales, some of the homes have minor contamination, some have more, but I know if I were buying, that would definitely make me think a little bit, but we've had no sales in that area to even know how it's going to affect the sales.
It's probably going to be hard to get a sale in there if they find out. The last numbers, Margaret, was it was seventeen houses in Franklin County, and it was three in Roanoke County.
Okay.
And they, and they got those filters in the houses, and DEQ told them that they could stay there as long as they were needed.
Yeah, and from what I gather, that the water is normal now, that they can drink it or anything else.
It's going through those filters, it is.
Yes.
The contaminated sources have been removed, but they, there's no data that they can tell on how long it will take, if ever, to fix itself. The last number that they told us at that last meeting was at least twelve to fifteen years for it to soak out.
Wow, see, I, I haven't actually gotten that information yet, we're still reaching out to the DEQ and talking with them.
DEQ's hard to talk to, they're hard to get for that.
I know, yeah.
And then there was one other question that I asked.
Okay.
On the Bedford side of the Lake Roanoke River, do they consider that riverfront property or lake property?
Uh, I, well, it's, it's waterfront, I mean, it wouldn't be considered lake or, I mean, it, it's going to have, it, but once again, it all goes by sales too, they're going to be looking at the sales data to come up with the values. What terminology they use on that, I'd have to actually talk to the appraiser to see.
Because I knew that, when we were at that meeting, and I, or right here, and I asked Agnes, and he said it was basically on Franklin's side was lakefront up to the county line, where back creek comes in.
Okay.
Alright, any more, anybody got any questions for, Ms. Torrance? Yeah?
First, I just wanted to say thank you very much for answering our quest, or my questions, and also forwarding those onto the board members, it, it really helps me be a speaker on your behalf to a lot of people, and I think it helps you because it keeps some of the questions from coming in, so thank you very much for doing that, it, I think it helps a lot to get the information from you.
Thank you.
And, and then, just a follow-on question, you mentioned that you had a thousand and forty-seven appeals, what was the outcome of those? Like, how many went up, went down, or, or going into, you know, some kind of action? Like, just in general?
Well, we don't know yet, because it's still working on them, but I will get a report once they're finalized, and I'll have that for you all if you want it.
Great, great.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, Margaret, thank you for being with us.
You're welcome.
I have a question.
Okay.
I was talking with someone that is very well-informed on assessments and reassessments, and, and I know you're not Wampler Eens, but you know a lot, you've been, you've been doing this a long time. I am hearing that they don't, of course, go in the homes, but I'm hearing as part of their analytical equation and their evaluation, that they look at the MLS, and they look at homes that have sold, even to the extent of looking at the pictures of the quality of the upgrades, and that that particular respective reassessment takes that into consideration, meaning, and I've got a couple cases of this, where there are two exact houses sitting across the street from each other. One was sold, the other one wasn't, same footprint, same everything, but the house that sold, they went and did a lot of upgrades and, and so forth, and so they got a tremendously higher reassessment. So my question is this, if, if we can't go into the homes, if that's not part of the assessment, then how is it possible that they can use interior analyses in, as part of their analytical equation?
Okay, um, by code, we're not allowed to go in, even if you're invited or not, but we use the MLS because everyone should get a building permit when they do certain things to their homes, and they don't. And over the years, things have changed, say a finished basement, or they added a bathroom, we were never told that information, so our data is not correct. When, and even when I do transfers, I go out and look at the MLS, and if I see a house was advertised with a finished basement, and I didn't have a finished basement, I'm going to go in there and fix it, because the data that I have is incorrect. So they use it in those ways, they then look at our data to see if it's got four bedrooms, I mean bathrooms, do we actually have full bathrooms? Bathrooms drive the assessment, bedrooms do not, total square footage does. So they're looking at that for detailed information about the home, and another thing we did, we would throw these sales out if it looked like someone had gone into a bidding war, and they were paying forty thousand more than the list price, we kick those sales out, we don't even consider them, because we know they're not an arm's-length transaction. So a lot of work and effort went into this, and I don't know if I've answered all your question or not, but we do use that as a tool, because we, first of all, check to make sure that what I have in my Kama database is correct.
So if, if, in my example, those two homes, if the one got a building permit, and the one across the street didn't, then there's going to, it's not going to be comparable in terms of reassessed value?
Well, it will, because it's going to be assessed on what we have in our database, so if this one has a finished basement and this one doesn't, the rate per square foot's going to be higher on the, on their basement square footage, because it's livable space than the one over here. So when we use it, we fix the data, those in itself drive the factors, we don't actually compare this house to this house, we're, we're comparing the sales in the area, but we're also looking at the size of the home, what it's made of, you know, like I said, whether it's a finished basement, whether it's not, number of bathrooms it has, whether there's an attic finished, those type things, MLS listings, when people are going to sell something, they put every attribute they can out there for people to see, because that helps the enhancement and to get their price. Well, when they do that, we look at that, and then that helps us update our data so that moving forward, we're assessing the correct house.
Thank you, Margaret.
You're welcome.
I put that whole house generator in my house, and it went up twenty thousand dollars off of the building permit, it didn't cost me that much to put that in.
Yeah, but look at the value it adds to your home.
Huh, that's right, I, I know what happened.
Yeah.
And they went and got the building permit, what was going to happen. Yes, Mike?
Just one, just for the benefit of the audience, Margaret, can you explain how we got the, the reassessment team that was hired? So I've had people ask me why you didn't hire some local person and, and this sort of thing, so just to clarify that for the general public.
Sure, um, there's not a firm, to my knowledge, in Franklin County, large enough to handle a job like this, it takes a year and a half to gather all the data, do the market analysis, the sales data, all that stuff, plus, in my opinion, to get a fairer assessment, having someone outside of the area that, you know, has no ties to anyone in Franklin County... know, has no ties to anyone in Franklin County would be a fair approach. And also, they know Franklin County's market. They have worked my building permits, the reassessments for the last 24 years. There are very few people that know how to read or can pick a, an appraisal and identify the, a correct appraisal, fee appraisal, on a lake property like Agnew's, he is the best I've ever seen at that. He understands the market. They're just very professional. The ones I deal with, which is the owner, Gary, and Agnew, they are just top-notch. And I think they gave us probably the best reassessment this year that we've ever had, even in light of this crazy market, because of the neighborhooding and the different things that they went above and beyond to do because of all these wild assessments.
Thank you. Doing a great job, Margaret.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you very much, Margaret. You've answered questions, answered calls for me. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
We're lucky to have her.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that.
Appreciate it. All right, who's next? Smith, you through?
Um, I'm not sure we can accomplish a few of my things. I'm wondering, from the county administrator's perspective, and given some of the things I've brought up earlier, is there any potential to talk with, you know, I, I don't know how to address the economic development budget concerns I have, which some of them are going to feed over into planning and also tourism? So should we speak with them individually, or is there the potential to do that while having more collective interaction because of the way I would envision maybe this could look moving into the future?
Sure, I think, Ms. Smith, as mentioned earlier, and I was trying to go back to my notes here, the various departments, I think, you know, taking the comments from all the board members previously, and the, the concerns and so forth, of the various departments that the board would like to hear from, I know I've heard specifically parks and recreation, tourism, and so forth. You know, economic development was mentioned in that context, maybe, Ms. Smith, as you were referring to. Planning, community development, very similar as well. So when we talk about village plans, when we talk about economic development, tourism, if, if I'm tracking with you where you're going, you know, at a future work session, we certainly could collectively have those various departments represented that, that make an assist, you know, answering your questions, concerns, more holistically, I guess? If, 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 if that gets to your, gets to some of...
Yeah, because, you know, I think, you know, we've got an economic development plan that I don't think we've adopted.
That's correct.
And so we've got a plan out there that tells us from last year with, with the consultants that did an excellent reporting. We need to be looking at documents like that when we're planning for how we're going to budget. Some of it's going to be capital, some of it's going to be operating, but if, like what I said earlier, we've got to get serious about economic development. And there's a $1.2 million budget here for next year. That is just not cutting it. And we don't even have a full-time director on board yet. And, you know, advertising, one good ad and one good circulating paper in a more urban area could cost us $400,000, $500,000, depending upon the reach. I mean, it's just expensive. So we've got to decide what is it, and look at that economic development plan, make sure that we concur about what's being suggested or not, and let that guide our thinking about how we budget for economic development from an operating perspective. Does that make sense to everybody? And, and I don't know if we can have that specific discussion during budget or not, but I think at a minimum, we need to, Mr. Whitlow, if you would, resend that document out to the board, and I would just ask my colleagues, you know, to take a cursory look, you know, just to give yourself, you know, an idea of if you support the direction that's being recommended. And the planning department, Mr. Whitlow, is, is all about the village areas in my mind. And I'm seeing that Ms. Cooper did not request any other positions over and above the code enforcement officer. But I know that we are having significant capacity issues in that department. So I would like to know how many vacancies are, do we have in there, and what are the job titles that are vacant? And are we meeting the need in there? Because when I, I'm working a lot with developers, and when comments are just provided the day before the deadline, that's not good news when my phone rings. So again, it's a level of service that we've got to decide if we're going to maintain. The other thing, Mr. Chairman, I think the public safety discussion that I would like to have is, is probably going to take on more of a, a longer discussion, perhaps. I don't think we can do it here tonight in 10 minutes, as an example.
We'll get that on the agenda for, we'll do that, have somebody Thursday's meeting for public safety.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, to tag on to Lori's comments, when going through the fiscal budget, I did make a notation here under economic development. Under marketing, I think they had proposed $27,000 in what was adopted or proposed.
What page are you on?
It's page 58.
In which tab?
It's under economic development. It's 810555902, and only gave them $7,000 out of the, the $27,000.
Okay.
Yes, I'd really like to look at what the board's expectations are for how we're going to move through and try to grow business in the county. So that's one thing. And I do want to kind of cherry pick off of tourism, which may join the earlier conversation. I know Kevin's here. I'm still seeing, you know, a static $75,000 for the ag fair. And I know we've had discussions over the last couple of years that, you know, I think the board's expectations for the fair are growing. I think you, I, from what I've picked up is that you want to see some more, some different things done, et cetera. So, you know, I would ask Mr. Tosh, because last year we came in, the actual was $143,000. That's what we spent with a $75,000 allocation. So how can we expect to have an ag fair that's either going to be the same or grow with, again, $75,000? And I think we put a lot of pressure on a one-man department sitting back there, and he's doing a fantastic job. But again, budgets are, to some extent, about meeting the expectations of the board. So, Mr. Chairman, I would be interested in knowing, you know, maybe from Mr. Tosh, if he has ideas about the level of funding he needs?
Yeah.
How growing or, you know, scaling the ag fair? Your opinions on that, Kevin?
All right, let's, let's go back, let's go back for...
Mr. Chairman, before you, before you leave that, I misspoke, I looked at my note incorrectly. They gave them an increase of $7,000. They asked for $30,000, and they got $27,000.
Okay. All right, let's, let's go back to the economic development. I, too, would like to see, and I would like to hear from Beth, what we could do to get more aggressive. I know that we've just come out of the, we, unprecedented time, I mean, with where we're at with our park, and everybody's doing it, but we've got, we've got, I mean, we've got three pads out there already developed, and one of them's 100 acres. And it's, it's got to be drawing some kind of attention. And I know she's going to do an update in Tuesday's meeting, and when we come out of that meeting Tuesday, we may need to have her come back on Thursday and, and see what we can do to be more aggressive, and if, what, if what we got to do, because we've got quite an investment. I mean, we've got, now, I know, I know a lot of the money that we've got out there is grant money that has come from the state and the federal government, but it's still tax dollars. They came from our citizens and can come from here. So, yeah, we need, we need to get, we need to get some input on what we need to do to get more aggressive with promoting our park. I agree. And I see everybody shaking their head, or not shaking their head, yes, because, yeah.
And I, and I include the village areas in that.
Yeah.
You know, these have been, you know, denoted to be the areas that we direct commerce, you know, by definition, and we've got a lot of potential. I know down in my district, a lot of, you know, things are, are going on. We've got to take advantage of those opportunities. You know, when, when we talked before about putting money in a reserve for infrastructure, that was a priority that we had last year, I think with ARPA money, I believe.
ARPA money.
Yeah, we made a focus of 3.7, I know, just through two projects. So, you know, I think we got to tear down the, you know, peel the onion back a little bit with economic development. It's about infrastructure, it's about marketing, it's about making sure our brand is communicating what we want it to, and what are the deliverables we're looking for, year to year, so that we can look at, example, that economic development strat plan, and we can look at it annually at budget and say, did we achieve it, did we not? And so when you do something like that, you become more deliberate, and you become more prescribed with how you're going to fund things if the money is available to do so.
Last week, last week I was coming back from Roanoke, and I come up, come up the top of the hill there on the Hardy Road from Bayrock Marina, and I took a left there at the intersection there where the store is. I don't know if y'all remember, some of you are new on the board, you probably don't even know the project went on, but the developer came, commonly known as Mormon Shores. And it just dawned on me, and I said, well, I'm going to go back in there and see what's going on. Now, I'm here to tell y'all, if you're down that way, you come up from Bayrock Marina out of Bedford County, come up to the top of the hill, take a left, go down into that first road and bear to the right, and go to the dead end, you're not going to believe what's going on back in there. I mean, it's going to blow your mind, and that's going to be some high-dollar homes. If you're down that way, take 30 minutes and go back in there, because it's going to take you that long to ride back in there and see what's going on down there on that. So, yes, there's a lot going on. Kevin, can you come up, please? You're on the hot seat now, big boy.
Kevin, if you're not ready, I, I like...
Now, if you're not, it's like we said earlier, if you're not comfortable, no, you get, you know, we'll wait till next Thursday.
Yeah.
See what the question is first. No, kidding.
But I, the, the question is, if I understand correct, and y'all said, the question is, are you with the proposed budget and with the fair? How you feel about what's going on? Have you got adequate help? Have you got a budget? And, and maybe Paul wants to come up because it's going on down there in, in his area? And, and how you feel what's going on? You know, you and I met with a couple of the fair people and the water lines, are they in the market of getting moved and installed and all of that? And, and your budget, how you feel?
So right now, as far as the budget goes, and I had been working under the last two fairs with the understanding of working towards a revenue-neutral fair to where the $75,000 seed money, in a perfect world, would be returned back unscathed. And I was just looking, there's $46,710 of that $75,000 left in the fair account after all expenses, all revenues are calculated out. So that's roughly, somebody do the quick math there, $29,000? Nobody fact-checked that. Somewhere in that range was the total expense of the fair to the county. So as far as a budgetary sense, I guess it would be the pleasure of the board to decide whether, you know, you want to proceed forward with, you're okay with none of that money being returned, if we want to continue to work towards, you know, a revenue-neutral fair that has zero cost to the county. You know, as far as a physical help during the fair, Parks and Rec, they pretty much shut down operations for three weeks, the week before, the week during, and the week after, and provide all the manpower there with me there 24/7, at least during those three weeks. Planning, of course, it's kind of the, the three, three sides of the department. Probably 50% of my time is spent, you know, dedicated to tourism, probably 30% of my time dedicated towards communication efforts, and probably 20% of the time, which is not evenly spread throughout the year, of course, is spent on the fair. So, you know, as far as that goes, you know, we're, we're continuing to manage, but I guess it would be the pleasure of the board on what you would like to see going forward with the fair. I would say from a revenue standpoint and from an expenditure standpoint, of course, with everything, capital projects would probably be the bigger move forward, you know, permanent lighting, permanent infrastructure would reduce those costs on a year-to-year basis, but they would be a pretty hefty upfront cost. So I think, again, it's the pleasure of the board, are we looking at a five- and 10-year plan for the fair, or are we looking to continue on a year-to-year basis? I don't know if that answers your question, or...
So Kevin, out of the $75,000 that shows up in our budget, are you saying that of that $75,000, you had 40-some thousand left?
As of last week, middle of last week, there's $46,710 of that money left. So the, the, the number that you're seeing there of the actual, that includes all the revenue that we bring in as well.
The 146.
Yeah, so we had increased revenue this year. We had minimal increases in expenditures. So, yeah, there's still $46,710 left in that account of the $75,000.
So, did that carry over travel back to him, Mr. Whitlow?
It did.
Yeah.
And, and so may I add, you know, to that, as Mr. Tosh had said, it's always been the goal to have the fair as revenue-neutral. So admission, tickets, ride sales, sponsorships, and so forth, the fair will be approximately 10 years old in 2024. I think the first fair was in 2014.
I think 2013 or 2014.
Yeah, 2013, 2014. And so during that period, depending on the weather, fair admission and sales and revenue has varied greatly. You can get a hurricane in late August and early September and wipe out the fair. Of course, we have insurance for that, but the planning, sponsorships, all of the rides, the midway, all of that has to be procured. And so this past year, it's my understanding, Mr. Tosh, was the most favorable year, I believe, in, in, in the last 10 years in terms of admissions, sales, and so forth. And so that $75,000 that's budget annually is the initial effort that, that takes to put on the fair, and then once the fair is held, then, of course, revenue sales and so forth. And so to Mr. Tosh's point, you know, $46,000 of the 75 essentially is put back, if you will, and, and carried forward. So, again, the fair is always a moving target because of the weather primarily.
Yes, and kind of as Chris said, we're trying to hit four beautiful days out of 366 this year, and that has a, a big deal in the bottom line. I would love to be able to tell you that we'll have record numbers again this year, but, you know, it's, it's weather-dependent. And when, especially when you look at Friday and Saturday, with the, the fairgrounds that we have, with parking, with all of the, the infrastructure, Friday especially, we're starting to get to that max level. So there, there's some constraints. So really, it's the direction of the board on what, what the fair looks like this year, what it looks like five and 10 years down the road. And I know in working with some of the folks from the Ag Development Board, they've been very vocal in wanting to see a five- and 10-year plan. But the fair kind of operates on a, a year-to-year-type basis. We would also love to get into a, a contract with a midway that would say, hey, this is your date, the third weekend or second weekend in August every year, whatever it happens to be, but that stability isn't currently there.
So again, it's about the expectations that the board would have over whether we grow the fair in scope, which what I'm hearing is if we grow it in scope, it's got to go somewhere else. Maybe, kind of?
I, I wouldn't go that far. No, I, I wouldn't say that. I think it would be infrastructure.
Okay.
It would be utilizing the space we have to, to its fullest extent, which would, again, come through. I keep saying infrastructure, lights are a big issue.
Yes.
Power is a big issue, water is an issue in necessary places, but we definitely have the room to expand. We would have to get creative because it's not the, the flattest of areas on the backside of the park. But I think the, the location of the fairgrounds works for what we're looking to do.
I, I would like to see kind of a rundown with approximate costs to achieve those infrastructure needs that you need, you know, the lighting, that kind of thing, to get an idea of what it's going to cost. I don't see that on our CIP. Maybe I, I haven't read down far enough, but I don't think it's on there.
It's not.
So if it's at the pleasure of the board, I don't know how you gentlemen feel about that, but I, I know that it's a very positive and strong issue for this board. So are we interested in learning more about getting those things, those needs met?
Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm glad you brought up the Ag Board, Kevin, because one of my comments was infrastructure down there. We, we need water so they can have more livestock during the fair and that sort of thing, and I hope we can address some of that this summer before the fair really gets rolling. But for me and the Ag Board, I think it's very important to have the fair continue moving forward and growing, and thank you for all your hard work in that direction. And thank you for all your hard work in that direction.
Mr. Chapman, approximately how much land do we have left down there that's undeveloped at the park? Just a guess.
Yeah, it's, for the most part, there's actually a conservation easement that's, that's across the wood line that's right there, so-
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Before my time, there was an easement that was made there at the recreation park when the landfill expanded. So, pretty much the wood line that's there at the park is pretty much as far as we can develop. So, it's real, I guess, there's some room down there towards, past like the Antique Farm Days their event is, on that hill back there. So, I don't know, maybe three to five acres approximately. We also, there's a small area, we do park some vehicles there that's by the small shelter. It's a little over an acre. We can maybe maximize that. There's little pockets here and there. There's a little spot behind the ball fields that we could maybe try to utilize and get creative with. So, there's little spots here and there that we could try to spread out to and maximize.
Okay, thank you. The, for my part, for my part to answer Ms. Smith's question, for my part, we are a rural agricultural county. So, why in the world wouldn't we have an agricultural fair? That's what it's all about. And to me, I mean, I'm one of two left that's, was here, day one started this, and I want to see it grow. I want to see it grow and grow. I want to see it get bigger than West Virginia Fair. And if y'all been over there to Lewisburg and seen their facility. Now, is that possible? I think anything's possible if we do it. And they went out there, went out there with that money that was left, and they said there was no water. I didn't understand it because there's plenty of water out there. But what they were talking about, there was nowhere to water the animals. Because I did not know this until I went out there and met with them. But the midway comes in with these hose bids, and they can hook up eight water hoses to one faucet. And they use that much water, especially, they said, what was it, Kevin? The water that they use for the snow cones. It was astronomical, just to make the ice for the snow cones. So, for my part, the money that's left over, put some water lines in. Put some, I remember this from before, because was you or one of your, when you was with the electric company before you retired, to come out there about putting lighting down the road to the pavilion back there? And they could add on to that. We need, I'd like to see some money put into that, this $46,000. As far as I'm concerned, put it in there, into the infrastructure to build it up for there. What about the rest of you gentlemen and ladies?
The only thought I'd have is, do you have a master plan, your vision of what this would look like in the end? It would be nice, as you put money into certain infrastructure items, that it was working towards that master plan as opposed to piecemealing things here and there that might not make sense in the future.
I'd say the honest answer would be no. And the biggest reason for that is operating under the assumption that the board's pleasure was to return that $75,000 each year. And then, being completely honest with the budget that it operates with, and then with the tourism budget in and of itself, you know, the agricultural fair takes up a large portion of the tourism budget at large. So, there's always the deal of if you increase one, you're probably going to see minimal increase in marketing dollars and things like that. But I think it's a bigger, and Mr. Whitlow and I have had this conversation of what the fair looks like to the board first and foremost. Because that's the main point to start with, because it probably looks a little bit different than it did, you know, pre-pandemic, and especially since when it originally started. And maybe putting some measurements and goals that this board would like to see, and then working that into a, you know, a short-term, midterm, you know, five-year plan, and then ultimately a 10-year plan that we could work for during our budget season. And we are getting to the point now where we were, with the size of our fair, you know, getting the midway, as you very well know, last year was a big struggle. But I can say we've maybe got over that hump to where we're looking a little bit more favorable to some of the midway operators. We have a little bit better track record. So, we are looking a little bit more favorable. It may give us more options down the road. But hopefully, that answers your question, that I think for myself, you know, I've operated two fairs now. This will be the third one coming up, depending on how the budget goes. But kind of having, this is what the board would like to see, these are the measurements, the performance measurements we'd like to hit, instead of, you know, go out and have a good fair, which is, it's tough to measure what a good fair is because it probably looks different for each and every person up there.
What we're hearing then is we need to have a three-year, five-year, 10-year plan. And that gives you more bargaining power with the midway and everything. That's what I'm hearing, right?
Yeah, and if, I guess, Mr. Chairman, to your point, if you want, I think getting some cost for the water and the electricity, would you view that in your request as more of a near-term item?
Yes, yesterday. With that carryover, that needs to be, and we need to do that because it's going on. We need to coordinate that with Parks and Rec, with Paul, because it's going on his, under his purview. And that money that we've got left over, you know, it needs to go there. If we got money left over like that, that $75,000, instead of bringing it back, in my opinion, coming back into the coffers of the county, it needs to go into the infrastructure development.
Has that money been repurposed, Mr. Whitlow?
To my knowledge, it hasn't.
No.
It hasn't, so it's-
So, it's still available?
Chris, it sounds like- It sounds like the money that was budgeted was expense dollars, and some of the improvements we're talking about making are capital improvements. Do you have the flexibility to swap expense dollars for capital dollars in this case? Excellent question, Mr. Quinn. Really, between the operational budget and the capital budget, looking at last year's carryover, and we can take a look at last year's carryover, and I'm trying, and I'm looking at Mr. Carter. We did carry over some funds into infrastructure and capital. And it may be, you know, if those funds are repurposed, I guess, operationally from the revenues to the capital, there may be a way that we could look at that. We'd need to, as staff, collectively put our heads together and maybe come back with some thoughts.
Something that just come to my mind that we talked about that day, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but maybe you can use a round figure. How much money was spent for renting those lights?
You're on, Kevin.
I know. If you give me just a second, I can tell you.
Y'all know the lights that were out there, and it had to have gas and diesel to run them, to run them. That's what- And I know that we can put in permanent lighting, and I bet you, Mr. Jameson still got his paperwork from where he went out there.
I can get it.
Now, the board, we get a big discount.
That's right. We know, we know somebody, don't we, Nick?
You got a discount the first time.
I think we did too. We got a, I'm sure we did then.
It was $16,767 in change.
That's, that was just last year. And that didn't count gas and stuff either, did it?
Correct.
That was just renting those lights.
Right.
We can do better.
Fuel was another-
We can do better.
$1,000.
We can do better than that. We can put permanent lighting in. I mean, if it costs twice that much, that's just the one-time cost. To come in for that, and you don't have to do the gas and stuff to keep them running and all of that. So, I mean, we already got the money to do that, probably the pipelines. Yeah.
This is an example where I think it would be helpful to have a master plan that included the lighting. And so you understand how this lighting expenditure you're going to make fits into your overall master plan for lighting.
I think the biggest thing I see for the Ag Fair is having a spot to hold livestock, have livestock showings, like horse shows, cattle shows, and stuff like that. And you got to have pens, you got to have water. I think that's your major sale on the Ag Fair.
That's what the people, what you're talking about, the Farm Bureau, the people there, that they could get panels. We just need another building.
But I think it should, if you look down there at Buckingham County where they have the barn, which is in a partnership with the Virginia Cattlemen's Association, they have a really cool place, and you can do horse shows and all that kind of stuff. I mean, I'm all for whatever we do for the Ag Fair, because my kids love the Ag Fair, have a great time. I hate to always sound like the grumpy old Scrooge, being the youngest person on the board, but, you know, these things take money. And to balance a budget, you either cut spending or you generate revenue, and the way we generate revenue is tax people. So, it's, you know, just something to keep in mind.
Mr. Chairman, before Mr. Tosh goes away, I just have one question when we get done with this.
Take yourself.
And this probably is going to be a tag team with you and Mr. Whitlow. VBR, Virginia's Blue Ridge, I'm seeing that there was a recommendation for a reduction of $40,000 from the, I believe, the requested, or the department request at 128. I want to know, is Rocky Mount paying their share for VBR?
I can take that one. I think maybe Kevin can help me fill in the blanks. Madam Smith, yes. Regarding VBR, of course, VBR, approximately the goal of VBR for Franklin County, approximately 2% of our transient occupancy is always the goal. It's not a set in stone that we've committed 2%, but that's always the goal. And that 2% is around 128. And so for the last several years, the county's allocation to VBR has really been in the $50,000 range. We're recommending to get closer to the 128 this coming year in the proposed budget. We're recommending an additional $40,000. That would get us to $90,000, almost to the 128 target formula. In doing so, and I'll get to Rocky Mount to answer your question here in a second. I just wanted to give you background and context. In doing so with VBR, we have seen significant partnerships with VBR this last year and additional this coming year. And I think that's not just in part because of VBR. I give a lot of credit to Mr. Tosh and his efforts working with VBR. We're seeing additional bass fishing tournaments at the lake that have been announced and maybe soon to be announced. And VBR is shepherding a lot of that effort now. And so that's a good thing. And so we think that investment and that partnership is, now we're seeing some really good returns. To answer your question regarding the town of Rocky Mount, the town of Rocky Mount, of course, has their own transient occupancy tax. And, of course, the county does not collect that tax. That's the tax that the town of Rocky Mount collects. And they currently are not supporting VBR to my knowledge in terms of any of that transient occupancy tax that they collect in town. However, the assets that the town of Rocky Mount have, specifically the Harvest or Performance Center primarily, and other amenities in town, I think VBR was down in the last couple of weeks on a tour with the town of Rocky Mount with some of the restaurants and the bed and breakfasts and so forth. Very successful tour, and VBR is able to use and market those amenities with the fact that they're located in town. However, to date, the town of Rocky Mount has not, to my knowledge, partnered, if you will, with VBR in terms of any revenue.
That's a problem, because, I mean, I know they're, they are increasing or have their occupancy, their meals, tax, and so forth. I just see that they should be a financial contributor. This is no small amount of money. And they're reaping a benefit out of it and not paying for it. And we're in partnership with a lot of other entities to help buy down the cost. And I don't know how this board feels, but I would be interested in knowing if it's something that we would like to talk to the town of Rocky Mount about. Y'all are chickens.
Well, I think, I agree with you. If they, not only the town of Rocky Mount, but the town of Boones Mill, if they are, if they are getting benefits, I think they have some skin in the game as well. But then, yeah. Staff will look into it and see.
Just a point of clarification.
Staff look into it and see. How do y'all feel? All right. Thank you. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Kevin.
Hey, Kevin, did you ever have that catfish tournament for Lake?
That'll be in October of this year. It's coming in October, yes. And we, as Mr. Whitlow alluded to, we should have some other announcements coming, so.
What, you going to do some noodling? I want to see you stick your, I want to see you noodle. I want to see you stick your hand up in them.
I caught a big 20-pounder out of the lake catfish.
With the pole? You didn't noodle?
Oh, gosh, no. But it almost pulled me in the lake.
What'd you use for bait?
I don't know. Artificial. Artificial bait.
Wasn't a chicken gizzard?
No, it wasn't a chicken gizzard.
All right, who's next? Anyone else? Did Paul leave? He snuck out on us, didn't he?
Paul had a six o'clock appointment he had to leave for.
Okay. Anyone else? Everybody comfortable? Then we will take this up.
Did you want to talk about the taxes?
Well, the, I want, you know, I want to do that while we're here. I would like to bring up, I would like for, have a little staff to have a presentation with the meals tax, cigarette tax, and rooms and hotels, and our tipple fees. To me, these are user taxes, and they're only, you only pay them if you use them. And especially when we got all of the, man, we're getting a lot of stuff coming in this county. And, you know, if you go to places like, well, take, I know we can never compare, like to Myrtle Beach or to the Smokies. I know we'll never be there. But you go down to Myrtle Beach, they don't have any taxes. But you got to pay 10 cent, 11 cent on every dollar you spend. That's why they don't have taxes. Now, am I saying do something like that? Of course not. But I'm just saying that I'd like to see some numbers on what it could be that we could use these user taxes, because to me, that's a fair tax that everybody has to pay when you use it. And I'd like to see some, some things on that. We dealt with the personal property and the machine tax and everything earlier. We dealt with that. So, I'd like to see something with that. Then I would be encouraged, then the other thing was the, the building, I've already checked with the, or staff did with the county administrator. When the schools, they give up, those buildings come straight back to the county. They belong to the county anyway. And we're already, we've been talking for how long with the 911 center? And right there at Burnt Chimney, what a better place for a 911 center than Burnt Chimney School. I don't know how much refurbishing it would have to be, but the water tower right there has got all the equipment, the biggest in the county. It's, everything's right there. It's, I'm not saying that we, to use it, but I'm saying there is a library already there. You can look in the book and see what we're paying down there. They can move the substation, or the sheriff's apartment up there, the West Lake Station up there, what, four miles up the road? There's a lot that we can do with that building that, and we don't have to buy a building.
Keep in mind that $4.5 million was projected for HVAC that's needed in that building next year.
And roof, roof also.
Roof and everything. But that's still cheaper than, huh?
I think it should be offloaded as soon as it comes back. I think it'll cost us a fortune. I think, and we're pulling it from one place just to bring it to the other and spend money on it. I don't, I don't like that.
All I'm saying is I think it bears looking into. Not saying anything concrete. I'm just saying I think it looks bears, because how much is it going to cost us? I mean, I don't even know, the sheriff will have to help us with that, how much room we need for the 911 center. That been talking about, and, you know, how much is a new building going to cost? I mean, can you go out and buy, you know, like a metal building and stick it up, put a faucet on, facade on the front of it? I don't know. That's where Randy comes in. To go down there and do an assessment. Anything's possible.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to remind the board, if you go down the road of the cigarette tax, if I remember the previous discussions on this last year, it was going to be a pretty labor-intensive thing for the Commissioner Revenue's office. So, that's another reason to shift and get her that position she's asked for.
For a very minimal return, if I remember correctly.
All right, anything else? All right.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, of course, the board meets, will meet next Tuesday for your regular monthly meeting at 3:00 p.m. And then next Thursday at 2:00 p.m. for broadband authority, a very short broadband authority meeting, and then- And then two-thirty, we'll have our next work session. David Rose from Davenport and Associates, Davenport and Company, rather, will be here. Just to guide the board through, I know it's mentioned a lot today regarding our capital improvement plan and then our long-term, looking at our debt, fund balances and so forth. I think he, he can be very beneficial and instructive to the board, and the board may have questions on that. In addition, reading back through, we have a lot of pages of notes from the board. I know there were a lot of things mentioned today. I'm trying to synthesize going through here where the consensus may be before staff spends a lot of time, because we don't necessarily have a lot of time. April eighth is going to be upon us very, very quickly. And so I did hear in terms of the board wanting, mentioned earlier, maybe some of the department directors that, that can join us at our future work session next Thursday, and then even maybe beyond, if, if we have other work sessions. Public safety, Parks and Recreation, we already mentioned the CIP next Thursday. The sheriff, of course, was here and already spoke some on the SROs. General properties, I think that was mentioned regarding the, the leases of county property. Then, of course, I know, Mr. Chairman, for follow-up for you and myself to bring any information back regarding any conversations that we may have with the town of Rocky Mount concerning, you know, the status of that memorandum of understanding. And we'll distribute that to the board, that previous memorandum of understanding. The, the other things, a lot today on, on the budget, but then I also heard a lot on, you know, future planning as well. We talked about the Ag, Ag Fair and so forth, and maybe a three, five, ten-year plan. I know that's not only budgetary discussion-related, but really what's, what's the long term? So, in terms of, you know, what the board's expectation may be for us and staff over the next twenty-seven or whatever odd days it may be before budget, before the budget looks to be adopted. And, of course, we took a lot of notes, you know, as I said, regarding the information from the board. I think there are some things that we already have and previously can dust off and send back out to the board. For, for example, the cigarette tax, the meals tax information. We have those previous numbers, what that may look like. It may just be a packet of information that we'll send out, you know, for the board, so you all have that information. Any other information that we can pull together, we'll do so. But then we will certainly be needing to look to the board as we get further into these work sessions for consensus regarding some of the previous board's comments and, you know, regarding more specifics in the budget. And I know it's, this is our first work session until after the budget was presented, and we'll have our next one next week. So, as staff, we will do our best to pull together information, I think, that could be beneficial to the board and also have those department directors that I mentioned specifically in those specific areas. So, with that being said, I know we will need some more specific guidance in the coming weeks. I think it was specifically mentioned regarding schools. And I don't necessarily know where the board may want to go with further discussions with the schools. We certainly will reach out if there's any further information that the schools can provide regarding their pay plan. I heard some of that information requested today. But if there's any further dialogue or information that you all would like from the schools, or if you would need school staff here at a future work session before April eighth, just let us know. Because I, I know there's a lot of honing in and, and so forth before the board will be able to, following public hearing, you know, reach consensus on budget adoption, so.
Chris, you have economic development listed.
I do. I have economic development and tourism. Yeah, yes, yes.
You got the five-year plan, three-year plan for Parks and Recreation. You should have economic, tourism.
Yes.
And you got it in there for economic development.
Right, yeah.
She's going to present Tuesday.
That's right.
And we may need to get her back for some in-depth talk on Thursday. Anything else? We'll set that up, try to meet with the town Monday or prior to the meeting on Tuesday. All right, I want to make sure everybody's got a clear conscience and are happy about what happened today. All right, with that being said, then I will adjourn, where's my paper? I'll adjourn until Tuesday, March the nineteenth at two o'clock.
Three o'clock.
Three o'clock. Two o'clock, two o'clock.
Two o'clock is Thursday, three o'clock.
With the broadband. Three o'clock.
Three o'clock Tuesday, the nineteenth.
Broadband's on Thursday, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Randy, thanks.
Yes, Randy, thank you.